Call this meeting to order please. We welcome you and appreciate you being here this evening. Um, we need a motion to reconvene open session. Thank you, Mrs. Petrie. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, if you wouldn't mind, let's stand and say the pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have some special recognitions this evening. Um, we have Melissa Hildebrandt, who is going to present for us the good news about one of our primary students.
Okay. A primary student was selected as Highlights Magazine cover artist. Congratulations to Ari McCrumb. Ari is a second grade student at Hillsborough Primary and loves to draw. Many of her drawings reflect her love of the beach. She often creates drawings and shares them with classmates' coloring pages. She is a truly talented artist.
Awesome.
And if we scroll down, we could see some, a photo, I believe, some of her artwork. And there's a picture of Ari up low as well.
Does it say when it would be on the cover? Which highlights it?
I do not know that.
No.
Those are sorry.
That's what that, yeah.
That's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, it's a real big deal.
All right. Um, the junior high also has some good things to share. So, Mr. Allison.
Okay, thank you. Um, congratulations to the summer football team. They played a perfect six and oh season this year. The team represented Hillsborough, both well and off the field. They were coached by Don Moore, Dave Pierce, Mike Wall, and Kevin Bishop.
Very good. Sounds like things went well. Okay. Um, do we have any signups this evening? You do? We have a high school good news as well, so.
It was a late breaking.
Late breaking news.
Actually, that's not true. It was a late turning in.
True confession, go ahead.
Thank you. Did you get it, Kathy? No? No? Oh, I was gonna give it to you. Okay. So, band ended their marching season on a high note. On October 14th in Patosee, they took second place in our 4A, 5A division. The color guard caption was best score in color guard in our class, and they were third place overall in the finals. And then on October 21st at Sekman, they were second place in the 4A division. Music and percussion captioned, and they had best score in music and percussion in our class, and placed sixth overall. So, we're super proud of our marching band, and they will be featured again tomorrow evening at our home football game. And so, we're just super excited about them. And I'd also like to share that following in the footsteps of the intermediate Like a Girl program, Hillsborough High School will launch Like a Woman, hashtag Like a Woman during the first week of November. Hashtag Like a Woman will focus on character development for female students in ninth grade, and topics will include respect, discipline, honor, citizenship, integrity, trustworthiness and courage, and leadership. So, we're really excited about that.
Cool.
On October 25th, 496 of our students in grades nine through 12 enjoyed a first quarter pizza incentive. And thank you, Ken Jackson, is she here tonight? No?
No, she's not here.
Helped us arrange all of that. And the qualified students had to have had no G or F first quarter, were absent two or fewer days, and also had no ISS or OSS. So, there was a lot of kids, and they had a really good time. And through our partnership with NCADA, we now have 28 high school juniors and seniors who have been trained in two peer education programs. Tripod, which is try putting off drinking, and High Step, which is high school taught education program. Our Tripod students will be teaching three lessons about the dangers of binge drinking and other high school, um, and, I'm sorry, binge drinking to other high school students in health classes. And our students that were trained for High Step will be teaching two prevention lessons on bullying and peer pressure to our elementary students. So, we're really, really proud of those kids. They went through an entire day of training on two separate days. And then finally, Senior Tyler Isaacson was recently named a Wendy's High School Heisman Missouri State finalist. Tyler was recognized for his hard work and dedication in the classroom, in the community, and on the football field, and we're incredibly proud of him as well.
Absolutely. Well, that's quite a list.
Well, thank you for letting me sit in.
You're welcome.
And I'll tell you all about the introductions we've had and will be having.
Okay. Always great to hear the good news, the fun stuff. Um, we do have one visitor to address the board this evening. Um, Tom Hollingsworth is going to address us with his daughter, Georgia, I guess.
Sit down. You're gonna offer your cookies.
Uh.
You want some? I don't wanna be like too mean.
So, let me, have a seat. Let me offer just a little bit of guidance here. We will, you have three minutes to address the board, okay? And we may or may not respond to you this evening, but we will notably discuss it either at another time or at least let you know later, okay? All right. You may begin.
All right. Dear Hillsborough Board of Education, on behalf of the National Honor Society, we would like to thank the principals by giving a brief statement about those who represent the Hillsborough School District. Our definition of principal is a person who is at the highest level of importance. But our principals make the students feel as if we are the highest level of importance. With every warm welcome in the morning, every smile in the hallway, every wave goodbye from the parking lot, there is no more you can ask out of for our principals at Hillsborough, because they do everything they possibly can to see us achieve. As a token of appreciation, we have a special treat to share with each principal. They have the special treat. Thank you to all principals that help our college to strive to annihilate average. And you can get your treat when, like, after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for expressing our sentiments as well. Nice job. All right. So, now we will begin the business portion of the meeting. Um, first items would be the items on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would like to pull the bills.
Okay.
And I would like to pull the band trip.
So, band trip is after, is, okay, letter I, and the bills is letter F.
And I would like to pull the warrant summary and P card. What letter is that?
With the bills.
Should be right there.
Say that again, then?
Warrant summary and P card.
Oh, it's on the next page.
It's included in the bills.
Okay.
She just has a question.
Okay.
And we'll need to make that, an amendment to, or a correction to the minutes for the September 28th.
Okay. I guess that's on here as well. Right? The minutes. So, we're gonna approve, well, can we just make the correction?
Make the correction to the minutes and approve for Adams, E and I.
Okay. So, what is the correction that needs to be made?
On the September 28th meeting, um, I think it's in section seven. The motion was made by Mr. Cruz to approve the overnight trip for Stucco as presented, seconded by Ms. Oshie, and approved by show of hands, voted six to one. If Mrs. Petrie voting no, it was six to two, because I also voted no. Or five to two, bro.
All right. So, the correction has been noted and made. All right. So, we are pulling, um, letters F and I. With those adjustments made, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Sorry. That was my timing. We're walking along. Okay. Georgia was faster than my timing. Okay. Have a second then?
Two seconds.
That idea, Petrie? Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of approving those items on the consent agenda? Okay. So, Mrs. Petrie, letter F?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Well, there's a check made out to me for MSBA lodging, so I cannot vote for that. And Kelly, this looks like I really stayed at some really penthouse. So, can you put on there, like, lodging for three? Because I wasn't the only one in there.
She might have put that in the accounting system, but she only has, like, so many characters.
Because it really looks like I spent lots of money. But anyway, I need to abstain from that.
Okay. So, noted?
And I, we did have a better room than the hotel people.
At least your water worked, right? The air conditioning.
They didn't have to move.
Okay. And Angie, you also had an item within the bills.
I actually had a question for Eddie. If you have a few minutes?
Sure.
I had a question for Eddie. I'm confused. And I was hoping you could clarify for me, and hopefully other board members. What are the Misha guidelines around awards? For our players?
Around awards?
Awards, and, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I actually got a call from the state today. So, here's what we're talking about. Um, I think the question is about purchase of a letter J for a player who had fundraised and met some criteria, so that is given reward. Um, we are in full compliance with Misha guidelines and the bylaws. I get your clarification. Called the state today, and they called me this afternoon and made me aware, and they assured me that we are in complete compliance with the bylaw, and not violating anything with what we're doing. That bylaw is centered more around rewards for performers on the field for the court, not for selling items or fundraising. Fundraising. Uh, so, yeah, we are golden, we are good, there's nothing to worry about. We are in 100 percent full compliance with these very high school institutions.
And, and that's what wouldn't, this had come up, and it's come up many times. And so, um, in their, on their website, it says $250. And so, when I talked with Don. Thank you, that's who I talked to. And he said, and I did not know this until this conversation, so this is kind of, oh, maybe for, it's $250 per event that's not related to competition.
And to that, I would respectfully ask, if we have questions like that, please ask. Because we're not trying to hide anything, we're not trying to do anything wrong. And I always get uncomfortable when the state calls me. I mean, I saw that number today, and I didn't know, I immediately think, it's like Dr. Corbin calling me for all due respect. Okay, what have you wrong?
You didn't do anything wrong.
But when Don told me what was going on, it just, you know what? I just wish that we could keep those questions local and get them answered.
And I usually do.
Yeah, you do.
I couldn't.
Absolutely. So, but we're good.
Do that.
We're good. And Don, like I said, he assures of that, and I can be happy.
But it was, it was the explanation that $250 per event. Because, and my first question was, what was the, is the year? Is it a year? Is it a season? And, yeah, so.
And what we've purchased doesn't even touch the amount that they're talking about anyway. We don't, we didn't get close to the, well, we didn't get to the 250. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you for the clarification. I thought it was good for everyone.
Oh, you're welcome. I appreciate your question. Is that it?
Yeah, you're.
Okay. We'll go back to that, yes?
On the band, I've got some questions.
Are we there yet?
No.
Well, if we're finished with the items for the bills, the category on the bills, if there are any other questions? Okay. Um, so, just have a seat. So, I need a motion to approve the bills for payment?
I make a motion.
Thank you. A second? Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. All right. So, moving on then to the overnight trip requests. Uh, the trip in question, or it has to do with the band trip that has been revised.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? And, um, Mrs. Soharsky, question?
On the itinerary, I noticed that it said that, I guess my question is, are the, is the band going to have a performance? Or there was something about an opportunity to play.
They will have a pre-performance at the Grand Ole Opry. They'll be outside of it, but they will be set up, and they will have their performance. And with the trip, do you guys have any questions? I mean, I feel like we kind of hit the things that you had concerns about last month, and we've really revamped this trip, and you wanted more of an educational opportunity presented. And I feel like that's definitely in here now in preference. Unfortunately, the days are what they are. And that's why they're still the same.
But it's one less school day.
Yeah, it's one less school day. Go ahead.
Well, and we've talked about this. It's, I mean, I love the fact that it definitely deals with music more so, you know. Is there a reason why this trip can't be bumped previous, like April, March?
We don't set the trip up ourselves. We go through a company, and we base, we've asked them that question, and they told us this is, I mean, that's what they said.
Because that's my own.
So, I can't speak to that. I hope we have smoothies. How's that?
Well. Wouldn't be an issue.
That was, my other concern was the time of it.
Sure. And to speak to some of that real quick, we understand that those students will be out that Thursday, Friday, and that the finals potentially are the following week. Uh, with that, we know that we will have to do a couple of things, and to ease your minds maybe even a little bit as well. The good news is those students will return to school on Monday, Tuesday, and see all of their teachers before their finals actually take place. Now, with that being said, we will have some students that may have to take an online final because of college classes, to which we'll have to get Chromebooks. And we can have them do that if needed on the trip. We don't know when those finals are set for. But worst case scenario, we don't know if they'll be able to take them earlier now since 90. So, we're planning for worst case scenario that we would have laptops and Chromebooks available, where if they did go on the trip, they would have access to be able to take them. That was our goal.
Because that hasn't happened yet.
No, none of that's posted, so we're just trying to plan for everything and be able to answer any questions you may have.
So, that's kind of addressing Mrs. Petrie to have in the future, you know, to leave May as the sacred month. I mean, I know other schools do that. As our other buildings, great, were kind of asked not to have their field trips in May again. Just, are you following me on that?
Yeah, I'm following.
Okay. So, for future reference, to maybe leave that in more, that time open to go up through April or into after school as well?
Right.
Just for, because you do have conflicts like that.
Sure.
But I think the improvements are good, and I'm glad to see that there will be some security, that that was addressed as well. That was a big issue for me.
Me too.
So, the board understands that with that, we're wanting to send Deputy Moonier, if available, correct?
He knows that, and I'm happy.
Yes. Uh, one question though, Mr. Moreno. I did notice that you have 10 other chaperones that are outside the purview of the district. How do we go about getting copies of their background changes to be with the kids?
I'll be honest, Dr. Corbin, I assume that they were on file with the district already, because they had done that. So, we can check that and make sure.
I think somebody else can share with us as well.
Yeah, I can make sure of that.
There you go.
And then also, I would just like to ask, in the future, I mean, I, what I've seen with Mr. Reed now, his trip to DC, and how they have the service of having the hallways of the hotel videotaped, I think that would be really something to consider in the future for these big trips, when there's so many kids involved. The chaperone to kid ratio isn't that great. And those hallways, not just, you know, I think it's just protection. It would, it's, I think it's, it's so, it's not an expensive thing anymore, and I think it would be something to really consider.
And that's a question that we would have to ask hotels ahead of time, or ask the trip company to ask the hotels ahead of time. First, I know when we go to Columbia for state wrestling, the hotel has cameras that go down both halls automatically. We didn't know that until we got there, and then we're like, hey, we'll stay here for the whole day. So, it just, I think it probably depends on the chain of hotel we're at and where we're looking at. But that's definitely something we can ask for, and we can look into, with every trip we take for that matter, whenever we call and make reservations.
It's a great feature. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Moreno? Or concerns about the trip?
What does the motion, Deputy?
Thank you. I have a motion, a first, to approve the trip. Do I have a second? Second. I want a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving this band trip? Raise your hand, please. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you.
And please express to the band that we are appreciative of the changes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. We will now move into reports. We'll start with Dr. Corbin.
All right, great. Uh, I'm gonna keep it short tonight. So, just really two things I want to talk about is EPA football field update. I know Ray will probably hit a little bit of that. There's been some discussions between Greg Bach, EPA consultants, and Prudent Contractors, trying to get everything fixed. Ray met with Prudent, I think, on the 20 something first. It was right there, the last of September, first of October. Uh, they come out, talked about what they're going to fix mainly is asphalt. They're gonna reimburse for some seed they had put in, some fertilizer, as well as some other miscellaneous things, as well as take care of the asphalt from right at the stop sign a little past their intermediate down tube, all the way to the field house, lay new gravel, put some washes to keep gravel from washing out, and some other things. So, we're still working on that. Uh, I think if they keep waiting, it might be springtime before we ever get started, so we're hoping it gets done pretty quick. I do know that the EPA gave them a timeline of had to be done, was right by end of October or the end of November?
Oh, yeah.
The end of November they have to be done, have to have it fixed, complete. Of course, we could still hold off our signature until we're sure they're meeting our expectation before they turn it over back to us. Another thing I want to point out is Deputy Moonier, the school resource officer, over the past month, you know, been looking at some ways to continue to retain his services after being notified by the sheriff that their down 12 officers that they're losing to San Luis County and other surrounding municipalities after, was it Prop P? What was that up there in the city? Where they can pay more money. So, I sat down on the 18th and visited with Jefferson County Sheriff Marshad. We had a great conversation. My takeaway was, it's written there, he's doing everything he can to keep that from happening. One of the key things is this, the public is trying to get it to something in front of the voters to help retain officers in Jefferson County. He's hoping that that is successful. But of course, he told me that he would give us 60 days notice. Previously, it was 30 days. But he told me to give you 60 days before he pulled Jerris from us. And, and I want to speak for all the administrators. Jerris does a phenomenal job. He works well with our kids, with our parents. Uh, he's well respected within the sheriff's office. So, we're hoping to do everything we can to keep him on board. Other than that, I just put some informational readings down for you. I hope everyone found a place to park with all of the parent-teacher conferences going on. Uh, do want to note again, upcoming things in November that we have going on. Uh, if any of you, remember, we can't keep all of you, but if some of you would like to visit some of the architect meetings that we're having with the buildings, let us know. I think we have two members of the facilities committee, Ray. So, the next one we have, we might want to reach out. I know Director Stevens works out of town. You work out of town too, but, I mean, if we want to work around your schedule, we'd be glad to do that. Uh, right now, we're focused on junior high. Heath got an email, was it today or yesterday? And what I like about arc images is they're really listening. Heath and his team had some good ideas on shifting the addition to that, to the gym, one way or another. And, uh, so, anyway, just if you want, if you want to be involved in that process, we'd love to have you. Just reach out, give me a call, and all let Ray know as we schedule his next meetings. Other than that, you see what's happening in November and toward the end of October, which we're at now. Want to point out that November the 30th is the second round of the Jefferson County Communications Meeting with local Jefferson County schools in Northwest, so I'm excited about that. I'll be reporting on that to you in December as we get ready to kick back off our communications committee meetings, finish up our communications manuals. So, with that, I'll take any questions if you have them.
Okay. Um, let's ask Director Best to come to the front and present his report on facilities and grants.
Thank you. Good evening, Juan.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. The follow-up was Dr. Corbin and some information you've given. I'll get to that here in a second. Uh, first, I wanted to report to you that at the high school, we did get the new ropes on at the concession stand and the track shed. Those are par year ropes now. Uh, that was through the storm we took back in March, I guess. Uh, so, we've fine got it done, but they're brand new for the ropes, so that's in good shape. Uh, we did get the roof flashing all redone also at the high school. A lot of that got tore off. I think they wound up somewhere around 42 pieces of material that got mown off at the same time. So, that helps protect those ropes as well, again. Compressor in the library went out in that one, which wasn't good at that time it went out, of course. Never is, but it hasn't been fixed. And the city Hillsborough, in case you haven't heard, is putting back the generators on the wellhouses. So, so that's what all the big messes back there at the state of high school, that's what they're doing. They've got a grant or something, maybe. I'm not sure how they were able to finance it all, but it's gonna be helpful down the road, because now they'll lose power. You still have water.
Good.
It's good news. Uh, moving on to the junior high, to follow up with what Dr. Corbin was saying. The arc damage has an outstanding workforce. Uh, they are listening to the administration, the teachers, the staff, and everything. So, and we got more to come. Next meeting actually is tomorrow. First place we're going tomorrow, of course, is primer. We didn't get there last week. They came in last Friday. We spent about eight hours together with five engineers and the architects. So, tomorrow, we get to the end. Uh, they're looking at all the systems, anywhere from HVAC systems to structural issues, stuff like that. Last week, we spent a lot of time in the, in the junior high looking at the wall in the science labs. labs. The engineers are looking to see how they're going to be able to stabilize those walls, and that's what they're working on now, to see what that will have. It is moving just a little bit here and there in some areas. They noticed the plates. We understand that. They know that, but we've still got to stop it. So the round systems are working, though. They're happy with that. All the reeds are still decent, trying to keep them out of the flooding, so we're okay with that. Again, we'll start the primary tomorrow and start with theirs. They've got a lot going on over there. We did change the layout a little bit. I don't know if Dr. Corman shared that with you, but they're going to zigzag the six new additional rooms.
I forgot.
Yeah. So they're going to zigzag them instead of going straight out. The reason why we couldn't go straight out is it would cost us way too much money. So first of all, we did through the nature trail. We almost be at our property line, and we'd have to have them, you need to move out sick holes.
There's a trunk line.
So it was costing way too much money. So they said, nope, X that, let's go back to the different plans. So we will build to, in this case, now because we're going to that route, we'll actually will tie the B corridor out of the north end to the back hallway corridor now.
The second grade.
The second grade.
If you remember, we were just going straight out, and there was going to be some type of walkway or whatever not, but now they're just going to kind of zigzag in a Z form till they hit that building, and it's going to take care of, they'll just be all connected. So the kids will all be inside. So we're excited about that. And plus, there was something about having to build a ramp grade, right?
Yeah, it's not because of the ground level, there's going to be a little bit of grade level. A little smaller than what Scott's got in his building, though. It won't be as high. So but they'll have that. One good advantage additional to that, which they was trying to get, they couldn't get it this year, but now they are because of zigzag, they're going to get bathrooms back there. So they will get additional bathrooms put in on that end of the building that wasn't originally figured out, but is now and is still in the budget. So we're still good there. They will add, they will gain another courtyard for us to maintain, it'll be enclosed, so.
You're excited about that.
I'm real excited about that, Mar. I'll use a more. I'm good.
You already got one.
I did. That's got to leave it there. And the follow-up with the intermediate with the field and what's going on with EPA and Prudent, as Dr. Corman filled in, yes, that we've known a lot of times, they have done the gravel part now. They're waiting for Angelo Brothers, which is the contractor for the asphalt, is waiting for the EPA to give the final AOK to do the blacktop. They have the information to them. They're waiting for, and Greg, I just talked to him this morning, he's waiting for his bosses to give him a green light, basically. Because what's happened is there's $8,100 charge that Prudent and Angelo Brothers have to eat. Because what they did, they messed up the original bid on what we started with, so now they're going to have to fight that part, that's nothing to do with us. All they got to do is get our job done. So that is coming about. They're looking, hopefully, to do the black part overlay sometime next week. When they do that, they'll also put in the water brooms, which is above the gravel levels, so that way the water's deflected to a different location. So it'll work out the roadways. So we did get all that information as well. Elementary, we did get RTU, we're pretty well back up and running good for her. We do have some safety concerns in that area with the playground. Dr. Julie's working with us on that to help us. And what basically is, we've got a couple of slides that are all covered age. They've banned, they've got some self-damage, we've had to lock them off. It's all through Lilitix. We're working with them to see what the cost factors are to get that replaced. It's a three-sided, it's a three-layer slide, so it's like three going out one time, so they're very expensive, but right now, Dr. Julie's at least helped us get it kept locked off and keep the kids safe until we get there. By the way, like I said, we've got some stuff going on with the bond stuff. It's going to be cool, so hopefully you're going to join us all. Turplus actually went well. We got rid of the two vehicles, and we got rid of a bunch of stuff that's collected for the last couple of years, because it's the first year we've done for a while. Rough actually, just so you know, we actually, I think, Kelly will be the one that has on this one, I'm sure. But I think we might have made a couple hundred bucks, so there you go. Of course, we look at it from the point of view, you've got two vehicles, so that's not good, but we did clean out the bus. Bus drivers will be happy. They can park the buses in here this year to keep them warm. They don't have any problem with it. So I think we did good. So just remember, daylight savings time is coming up on the 5th, so and the weather's changing for tomorrow, so be ready. Any questions? That's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up will be our technology report from Director Ringo.
Hello. Good evening. This past month, we had 182 work orders completed. Karen got her Moses data certified and on time, so we were excited about that. That's kind of a huge deal. This is our big file. That's five separate files that all have to be analyzed and then certified, so it was a pretty big deal. I'm excited that in Infinite Campus, I have a few teachers who have been brave enough to experiment with online assessments with me, and it's actually working out pretty good. And we're doing it with third graders, which was really interesting. And so the kids are able to take the test online. It immediately scores the test and automatically goes into the grade book. So it's kind of exciting for the teachers, too, because grades are already scored. And it gives feedback to the kids, so they can see exactly which questions they missed, and mom and dad can get on there and look at that as well, which is kind of nice. We got two new 3D printers installed at the junior high with the GP brand. However, we got a call today, saying they're having a few issues with both of them today. So we got to check that out, see what's going on with them. As far as training goes, we did, I did a class on the asset tiger inventory, and we did some team-building exercises. Erin went to a Mornet conference and brought back some really good ideas, and Ethan and Mark attended an Apple Tech update seminar. And I wanted to stick this picture on here, on if you saw this picture, Mark actually replacing a fan on a laptop. And I don't know if you look close, you're going to see a whole lot of screws on the table. So it was a lot of work involved with just replacing a simple little fan. You wouldn't think it'd be a big deal, but it actually was. So sometimes little things can be complicated.
That's right.
Any questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Genge, who would like to have the financial report?
I did something new for you this month. I did create a graph because it's obviously suggested that that might be a good idea.
It actually stemmed from one of the trainings we had together. Thought it was interesting. One of the school districts out by Kansas City started providing this to their board, so you can kind of see how your budget's tracking. So we're excited about that. It was trust that verified was the MSBA training that Mrs. Arsene and I were at. So just thought it'd be just another thing to look at when you talk about budgets.
How do I put it up there, I'm sorry? Sometimes it's easier if you look at that graph and just see a bunch of numbers. I don't know how well, because I didn't get in the board packet in time. So as far as our financials, everything is pretty much tracking like I would expect it to do this time of year. Revenue's up a little bit from last year, but that's just a timing issue with some tuition bill backs that we got in at the beginning of this year instead of the end of the year last year, so that's not a big surprise. Expenditures, again, down a little bit, but that could just be timing. We're getting some of those bills paid from all the new supplies we ordered and things like that with the new store there, so. This picture really does a good job of showing you the total fund balance, and you can see from year to year, we trend the same. You know, our balances kind of start dropping this time of year, and then we start getting our money in from the county, from the tax revenue, and it shoots back up, so. That little, man, that's not a real good picture, is it? That little green line on that top one basically shows you our fund balances are up a little bit this year.
Wow, that's fierce.
She's got the document.
So I did pull the bond money out of there because that skewed it like crazy, made it look really crazy. But the bottom graph is just our operating funds, what takes up at debt service and capital project piece. But, you know, they're all moving, you know, with trend, so that's good. That's what we want to see. As far as revenue on the state side, I went to a conference a few weeks ago and got to listen to Desi speak, and they increased the state advocacy target, which is what our formula is driven on, which is awesome. That means their revenue's coming as well. And he said by the beginning of the year, they anticipate they're going to analyze it, see where they're at, and he anticipates another increase. So I built my budget around $6,220, and that's what they paid out in October. It usually goes up as the year progresses. So he feels confident that they'll get to $6,241, which is what Desi did tell us, that I never budget more interpretively. Yes, because it typically doesn't come to fruition, so. Let's see, what else does he want to tell you? Classroom trust fund money also is coming in strong, and I feel like their estimates on that are accurate as well. I feel good about my numbers that are in the budget, but next month, I'm probably going to raise our revenue on that end, because I think it will come in better. Let's see, what else? Another thing that came out of your, I think there may have been a question about wire transfers and how we handle those in our district. Just a few different, we wire money to other companies outside of our district, but also we transfer between funds. So any of those transactions are seen by whoever's doing the bank rep, and that's not me, so that's a good thing. We have some good controls in place right now. If it has to do with payroll, like if we're paying our insurance, if we're wiring them money, peers, PSRS, things like that, our payroll person does those wire transfers. I typically just do things like fees for our bonds and things like that, so. I typically see most of it, but whoever does the bank reps is doing all the checks and balances in that regard, especially to make you feel comfortable that my hands are the ones touching all of that, so that's a good thing. Also, we have a new face at central office. We have a new receptionist. I don't know if you've been in in the last, what's this, second week?
Second week.
Second week. She's doing awesome. She helps with our accounts payable, runs the POs, stuff like that, and she's catching on really fast, so I feel really good. Pretty high. So come in and tell Megan hi. She's our new receptionist. Also, in my department, in the next few months, actually, after the beginning of the year, I'm going to start working on changing our accounting codes. Next year, effective July 1, we have to have all of our accounting codes switched over to where we're tracking them by source, so local, how we're paying people, local, county, state, or federal money. It's kind of a big deal because it's revamping everything. So when you see the warrants, if you see like a longer number, that's the new number. Yeah, there's a piece in the accounting code string that's going to align with Moses, the building piece, so it's going to be a big task, but I had a webinar today with our accounting software, People Aim Desi, in conjunction, and it went really well. I don't think it'll be too terrible, but just be some adjustments to do. Other than that, I don't have, unless you have questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kylie, I don't know if we have a report from you.
Lady Dr. Suda.
Okay.
George, we took care of what we were going to say, so.
Well, that's good. She was on it.
Yes, she was.
All right. That concludes our reports at this time, and we do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move ahead to new business. And that will bring us to our visitors in the audience as well. We want to approve this evening the resolution to establish the escrow for the property. So do we need to hear from them first, I suppose? It'd be nice to hear the resolution.
On the left is Sean Flynn, Gilmore Bell is in the journey, and then Lorenzo, Lorenzo Boyd is with Stiefel Nicholas. Or you can just go by Stiefel or Nicholas, what do you go by now? Just Stiefel.
You call me anything.
Call you whatever. Lorenzo has been with you for several years now, is your financial advisor.
Trip.
Oh, yeah, I'm good. I was watching.
You were close.
I just put that there.
So I don't know, which one do you want to start, or talk about the structure, or what this resolution does?
I was going to let him sit down.
Well, we can pull up another chair. We have another, we have one right here.
Yeah, why don't you sit beside me, Sean? So the resolution that Sean drafted up with Gilmore Bell is going to authorize the district to put monies aside to put into an escrow fund, the operating scrap lease that was started in January of 2005, I believe it was, and has a final maturity December 2024. So on October 31st, Halloween, we're going to purchase securities on behalf of the district with the monies available, actually subscribe to those securities, state and local government securities, and put into an escrow fund with UMB Bank that'll pay the interest on the Ravenscrap lease all the way through 2024, and then make the final payment on December 15, $1,570,000. And that lease will be paid on a monthly basis, as it's being paid now, a little over $6,500 a month, totaling about $78,500 a year. So with the interest in there, we'll have a full payment of $1,570,000. So at that point, once the escrow is funded on November 9, the district will no longer have responsibility for making the payments from its operational funds, which will actually, I see that.
That's the head payment.
That's the right payment, which will free up operational revenue for the district to use for other needs throughout the school district.
So Lorenzo, talk a little bit, or Sean, how does this process work? And what, you know, you talked about saving the district the money, which in effect is $150,000 annually. How does this fund itself and make the payments and still build enough revenue to generate for 1.5 million payoff in December 2024?
So right now, what's happening is the district is paying, and I'll just use not the monthly terms, but the yearly terms, $78,500.04 to Ravenscrap every year for the lease. And then they're putting aside the same amount into an escrow fund that they have been placing to the side of $78,500 a month, and that was to be used for the full payment at the end of 1,570,000. So on November 9, what's going to happen, the district has already accumulated about $988,000 that it has in the bank now. The other, roughly about $906,000, they're going to use from the available bond proceeds to fund the escrow for about, a little over $1.8 million, almost $1.9 million. That escrow will earn interest. Roughly, we won't know what that interest will be earning now, but when we purchase the securities on October 31st, when we last did our last set of numbers, they were earning a little over 2%, about 2.02%. So from now until 2024, you'll be earning a little over 2% in that escrow, and then UMB Bank will be responsible for making monthly payments to, with the amounts that are being put into the escrow from the available bond proceeds and what you said, so for making those monthly payments to Ravenscrap, earning 2% interest. So total, what happens is, I think Ravenscrap is owed about $2.1 million over life from now until 2024, so you'll be putting about $1.8 million into an escrow account, so essentially what you'll be earning is roughly around $300,000 from now to 2024, based on the securities that you purchase on October 31st, close on November 9.
Questions from that? So I had one board member to reach out and ask, is there any likelihood, what is a likelihood, substantial, minimal, or otherwise, that the district might have to put more money in in the future? If, or is this a locked-in 2% for the life to 2024, with the market fluctuates? Can you talk about?
Yes, surely can. So what we'll be purchasing are what we call state and local government securities. Those are, we call them slugs in our world, and they are US Treasury securities, already AAA by the federal government. So those are available for purchase for institutions like whenever they want to debes bonds or pay off bonds earlier, for instance, like this, where you want to set an escrow account to make payments in the future. So these are actually Treasury securities that are issued by the federal government, that are rated AAA. So those have stated interest rates that they're going to earn over the life of the escrow, so it's pretty much guaranteed that if something happens and it, I don't know, what can we expect? What can we expect, kind of demolition time?
I mean, the Treasuries aren't subject to redemption.
Right.
You know, it's, can't imagine you having to put more money into the escrow at any point.
And so I've been doing this 21 years now, and I know you guys are looking at me, I'm just 22.
No way. Thirty-five, at least.
Thirty-five, at least, yeah, you're right. We've done countless defenses over the years where we've used, and refundings, so actually, when the district does a funding as well, these are the same securities that you usually put into your escrow account for your fundings, and I've never seen any of those securities default anyway.
Now, on the bonding language, I guess this goes to Sean, does the language that the board used to present to the public, does this fall in? Because we talked about using some of the bond proceeds in order to pay off that property to save the taxpayer dollar. Is this still, even though going the escrow way, still falls in the lines of the bond language?
No, it does. In the ballot language, which is approved by the building's vacuum, it included the use of bond proceeds to pay off these obligations, so, you know, using these funds to set up the escrow, pay off the Ravenscrap lease, certain falls within the parameters of the ballot language.
You know what?
I'm excited. I mean, we've worked on this for three years, and it's, you know, I appreciate those two gentlemen there and those two ladies back there that actually are the brainchild.
Y'all know.
But I know we were on a conference call and all the sticking around ideas, and Sean and Lorenzo will come up with this one, and it's great for the taxpayers because you're saving them $150,000 a year. I like the fact that we're, you know, this was the 2 million we were using, right? Talk about that just for a moment. We had the tax, non-taxable taxable bonds. If you remember, we had 12 million. 10 was, I think, right at 9. 9 was non, no tax, and the other was taxable, and it was going to hurt at advance refunding, so can you talk about that for a minute?
Sure. So with taxable bond proceeds, there are limitations on the number of times you can advance refund those bonds. An advanced refund is any time you refund it more than 90 days before its call date. So by setting up this escrow to pay off the Ravenscrap lease, it is advance refunding, but we're using taxable bond proceeds, so we don't have any of those limitations or restrictions that go along with tax and bond proceeds. So to the extent the district is ever in position to refund taxable bonds, which is unlike them because they're shorter charities, you don't have that restriction of only using your one advance refunding because these are taxable bond proceeds.
Two, it worked out really well, didn't it? Really?
They did a nice job.
Thank you.
Saved us a lot.
And those young ladies did a nice job as well.
Thank you. We appreciated greatly. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the resolution, which will establish the escrow fund. So we have a first by Rob and a second by Eric. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of setting up the escrow? Okay.
I've never seen hands close like that.
We're ready for this one. No, we're ready.
Thanks, everyone. You were there for the long one, it was nice.
All right. You were given policy IKC. I think that was an email. Is that correct? Everybody was sent. And there were some comments from the lawyer there, from Celinda. Is this the one where she addressed?
Right, Celinda's is a little different, but I do need to bring you up to date on that. This is a policy revision to IKC. This was for the student that wanted to graduate early. And the reason that we sent this to you is it came to the policy committee who reviewed it and felt, correct me if I'm wrong, that they believed that the board needed to decide what to do with this policy. And the reason being, as you read through this email, I'm hoping you can find it, this policy, the language you're asking about is supplemental policy, it's not required. The district can do whatever they want with that language, just they didn't know what you wanted to say. So.
Are we talking about the eighth session?
IKC, yes. Eight semesters versus seven semesters.
So you have a.
So when you read that, you can choose exactly what you want it to say. You don't, I think you need it because it defines how to graduate over the honors, but also think there needs to be some language in there for concessions for kids that are graduating one semester early. So I don't know, can we, is there a way to pull that policy up for you? Wait, hold on, it might be in that email. I'll just read in the email.
Is that not what this is?
Okay, if you go on down to where it says PIN, how much you need, that is the policy that we're talking about. And the key word is not a 1.1, eight semesters.
So as simple as changing that to seven with approval.
Dr. Freeman, what are your thoughts? Add a minimum of seven, or something of that nature.
We can make it only fewer than that, because that's the law. But definitely.
And that was going to be my question, with kids taking English as eighth graders, you know.
That's why we're seeing more of this.
Right.
Plus, we're just seeing a lot of kids who, even if they don't want to pursue a college prep degree, they want to take those English credits, double up first semester, go to work, or go into the military, or go to college.
But legally, they cannot graduate in either junior year.
Semester before the recove.
Right.
They cannot graduate a semester before the recove. So you can either change that word from eight to seven. What type of impact will that have, Dr. Freeman? Is that the easiest fix, you think?
I think so. It just makes sense.
So that's, is that what the board would like to see done then?
I would hate to punish the one who earned honors and not get it. Yeah. I agree.
It needs to be corrected.
It's a simple fix.
Okay.
Because they still have to go through the application process.
So this is your, this could count as your second because the PIN would be the first. You can vote now to change it to seven, or you can wait until November to change it to seven. She, the student's not graduating until Christmas anyway, if you want more time to consider.
I personally don't see the need to wait.
I think I should go with it tonight.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the, what's the policy?
IKC.
IKC to, from eight to seven. Okay, we have a first with Eric and a second. Oh, she didn't hear. That's okay. It's just me. Okay. I know, it's Eric and Rob.
Okay, Eric? And Rob?
That's because I was, that was my death here. I guess, I don't know. Any more discussion or questions in regards to that policy? Okay, all in favor? Very good. All right. Now we will be looking at the ACT reimbursement. We need a motion to approve the reimbursement for all juniors that have taken the ACT, or that TATE. Sorry, they haven't done it yet.
I think we should.
Pardon?
Motion.
Yes. Okay. So we have, okay. So Jamie's first and then Beth. And they'll be taking that ACT in April. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. We only have 100 juniors taking that test.
This is out of a $4 million budget shortfall that the state had. They didn't notify us until the end of July, early August. But yes, on average, now, that's not to say they won't take it beforehand, but to make this concise, we decided to offer the reimbursement just for that Saturday April test, which we want our juniors to take it during April. That's the best time because they've had that much more content. And some of our students are not college bound, so.
But the number could be higher than 100.
I don't anticipate that. I have averages from the last, it's 10, 11, but that was over the course of the year. I don't anticipate it being higher, but that, you know, it could be a different class.
I was just shocked because I know there's more than 100 juniors possibly.
Correct.
I don't think it would be a bad thing if they.
No, it wouldn't be a bad thing. I mean, financially, we'd be okay if it was higher.
Well, it says reimburse them for all juniors. Typically, typically you would just reimburse for those that got above the state average, but because the state has, is no longer going to provide that support, we thought that this was it.
Okay. Great idea. All right. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of approving this reimbursement? Very good. Next item has to do with the concession stand and its sewer issues. That's a fun one.
Prior to making this motion, I would just like to discuss one thing real quick, so the board will know what direction to go. After speaking with Kelly and Ray, this started out as a small project, and the city came by and wanted us to have a little bit more information to them with engineers, which we ended up doubling the project. If you remember, the board said, yes, we need to hook that in. We pay about $6,000. Ray, how much do we pay to have that pumped out there?
It's about, average, $6,000 a year.
Okay, so $6,000 a year. So our recommendation is, if you do not have this budget.
I was going to ask.
And so what we would like to do is just notify the board that this is coming, and we'll need to budget for it next year. Now, I need to take a step back. We haven't budgeted, but we have like right at $20,000 budgeted, not this amount. So what we would like to do is take the $20,000 that you see in item D that is budget, not do item D, but we're going to have to do item E, and use the money we had for item D here for the concession stand, and move it down and take care of item E. So in this discussion, you know, if a member says, hey, I'd make a motion, we put this in budget for next year, starting July 1, 2018, then that's how we can proceed for planning purposes for next fiscal year.
The engineering or catheter piece, 14,000? Is that out of this year's budget then? Not out of the?
That's, we've already paid that.
Okay. That was my first question, and I already forgot my second question. It'll hit me, and when it does, I'll just interrupt you.
That will inspire a go on a date with, have the engineer do it.
No, no, because they had it all for plans, and they all met at city hall, and they went over it. One of the things was they had to actually pump out that septic, smash it down, fill it full of rock to make sure it doesn't collapse in the future and someone gets hurt. The issue is, we wanted to kind of speed it up because we found that tranche borough underneath the roads and the sidewalks there, and at a halt point, we want to make sure that we do it before they start building the rest of the homes and laying the foundations as well as the sidewalks. So, but at this point, it's a large amount of money that you.
Do we have to take this to bid again next year, or sooner? You're not going to go to the same bids.
We can ask them if they would hold those bids, but I doubt normally it's 30 to 90 dates. But knowing that we need to start looking at it in July because it's a better time to do it, Ray can start bidding that out in May and June, be prepared for July start. What we, me and Kelly and I always worry about is, understand that if you can see that nice little pretty graph, we spin our reserves down until we start getting local revenue based on taxes in December, November, December, January. So we just have to be careful with what we're planning next year, during July and August, but that's, if we know what we need to do, we can plan for it ahead of time.
I make a motion that we move this to a project for next year, a budget for next year. Whatever the word.
Start in July, July 2018.
The concession stand we're talking about. Okay, so we need a first by Angie, a second by Beth.
I had caught Ray with a lot of questions, so.
And we appreciate that. We appreciate you getting those answers ahead of time.
So we are moving this to July.
2018, bud.
Okay. Any other thoughts? All in favor of moving this project? Very good. Thank you, Joe. Okay, we'll also then turn our attention to the maintenance sewer addition, which is what we were just discussing, and that's the one we're going to pay for this year.
There was a knock on the door, and from the city building inspector who notified us, we need to take care of that problem. Right, Ray, I mean, I don't want to misspeak, but that's pretty well the long and short of it. And you see three bids there, anywhere from $9,000 to $11,000, in order to take care of those commitments.
Which absolutely has to be done now, so we can't wait for that one.
I move to accept the bid of Drain Express for $9,540.
Thank you. All right. Any other thoughts about this project? So I have a recommendation or a motion to accept the bid from Drain Express for $9,540 to attach the maintenance shop to the public sewer system by Thanksgiving. All in favor? All right. Very good. All right. Moving down to the last item of the evening, we have graduates that would like to graduate a little earlier. So I need a motion to approve the list of students to graduate at semester, providing all the criteria is met. Thank you, Renee, and second by Beth. Question, Angie?
I have a lot of questions when looking over those applications, and I had talked to Mrs. Freeman, Mrs. Lloydan, and the one thing that was suggested from the ladies was that we should have a different application for the Missouri options. They have a different set of requirements to me, and that's confused me greatly when looking.
I really can't tell you why I've never gone on this before, but we're like, why? We should have a separate application for them because it's not the same.
Just a suggestion.
But we didn't make the application anyway, did we? Who made it?
The early graduation application?
Yes.
I am here, and that'll be on the other side.
Okay, well, so I'm thinking you can just.
We're going to have two applications.
There you go.
One in that program and one with the rest.
That sounds like a.
That was a great suggestion.
So that works? I don't have any issues with that. That would make it a little easier.
Yeah, there was a lot of kiddos who weren't meeting the requirements, but they really were.
I asked the same question. Okay.
And the other comment that I had is that this is the first time that I paid attention or maybe was aware of the number of 4.0 kids, 3.9 kids that are requesting, you know, early graduation.
They are expected.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's, you know, your high-level kids.
So our new policy will be.
Right, our new policy will help them. We're just going to be able to share the accolades with them as well.
Which is deserved. Should be. Okay, any other thoughts? All right. All in favor of approving this list? Very good. All right. That concludes our items.
I do want to make one comment before we adjourn. In your consent agenda, we, I want to call your attention to policy George David Cat. I don't know if I'm seeing it on here.
I thought that was everywhere.
It is, but the policy was, there it is, support staff recruiting and hiring. I just want to let you know, if you read that, it was from MSBA asking you to not remove the language. So when this comes up for a read, final read, your attorney has directed us that their opinion is also in line with MSBA, leave that language in. So when you read over GDC for your second reading, please make a note, it'll say, comments on page five at the top, turn to page five, and that's everything that the board wanted to take out because that language is in BBFA. MSBA said leave it in, and your attorney is saying leave it in because it meets legal requirements. It's required by law. So, sorry, I just wanted to throw that in there for you to read up on, and we can talk about it next time.
For the next time. Okay. I need, thank you. We have a second by Eric. Any other thoughts? All in favor? Appreciate it. Mr. Freeman, it's okay? All right. Thank you.